Call to order, the special meeting of the Board of Trustees. This is April 3, 2019, and we will stand the pledge allegiance to those who would like to be cited.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, I'll note that all of the members of the board are present except for Peter Haslam, but we expect him to arrive any minute now. We have one, well, we have public comma, I don't have any speaker slip, this would be a rarity.
It didn't used to be a rarity.
Nothing I'd ever experienced. Very good. So our one item is discussion of the 2021-25 five-year capital outlay plan, and I will turn it over to Lindsay, Lindsay Moss.
Great, so before we get started, I want to let everyone know that our facilities planning consultant, Eric Middlestead, is on the phone. He can actually see us and he'll probably pop up there when he starts talking as well. He couldn't make it physically today, but he is here in case we have any way, Eric. We're all looking at you.
Hi, Eric.
Hi.
Hello.
If there's any questions specific to the state funding model or things in that area, he can chime in if I can't quite, if I don't know that specific information. So today, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, we're just going to really have a discussion about where we're at with our five-year capital outlay plan and the information that we know from the chancellor's office right now and where we need to head. I called this board meeting, requested this board meeting because our five-year capital outlay plan is due July 1, and there's a lot of work we need to do between now and that next June board meeting where we will be asking the board to approve the five-year capital outlay plan, and I wanted to make sure that the board was in line with what we were headed and that we're going down a path that is going to work so that when we come in June, it's not a surprise, and so that we're all aligned. So trying to do it earlier than normal, kind of a preapproval of the plan. Okay? The five-year capital outlay plan, as I said, is due in July, but this year will be one of our first years that we're trying to take what we've worked on with our facility master plan and implement that into our five-year capital outlay plan. Some of you may recall that a few years ago, we just had one project on the plan, last year we just had two. Now that we've been doing the facility master planning work, we have a clear idea of what projects we want on the plan and want to put those on the plan this year for the first time in a while. And some of the projects we'll be requesting state funding for, and other ones we'll just be documenting so the state is aware that we feel that these buildings need renovation or modernization or replacement, but won't be asking for funding at this time for those buildings. So to start with, I want to talk about the proposed changes to the capital outlay funding allocation and metrics. As the new funding formula has happened for appropriations overall with the student-centered funding formula, the chancellor's office facilities department is moving towards that same vision for success funding approach for capital outlay as well. Now currently and historically, the capital outlay funding metrics have been quite complex. That's why we have someone like Eric Middlestead, our consultant, helping us calculate what type of buildings we should be requesting for state funding and which ones maybe wouldn't rank high because there's six different categories, and each of, depending on the type of category, those projects are ranked and then compared to other schools' projects, and depending on how our projects will fall in the ranking, we have a higher or lower probability of receiving state funding for those projects. Now, what the chancellor's office is currently working on is changing those criteria and that ranking and those metrics to be more in line with the vision for success. And I'll hopefully have your computers handy, or if not, I have a few handouts handy. This document here that was called the prioritization criteria, I just tried to create a little summary to give, do you want one? To give a general idea of what the changes are that chancellor's office is considering right now. So you can see currently, there's six different categories for the types of buildings. So when we're requesting funds, we have to say, we believe this building is, for example, category A, life and safety, and then their specific criteria we're ranked on for that type of building and that type of category. But what they're moving towards, what they're proposing, are to decrease those six categories down into three categories. Okay, so a little bit simpler, just the life and safety growth or a modernization project. And then what's being described over here on the right-hand side is how much money they're going to be allocating to those types of projects. So for life and safety, of the money the state has available for California community colleges, 50% of the funding would go to life and safety projects. Then the other two, growth and modernization, the remaining 50% would go to those two, split 35% one and 65% for the other. Okay, so just some background of the split that they're working towards. And below that is an example of the changes in the points of how it's currently working with the ranking and what they're proposing. And you can see the four categories for visions for success, those will now receive points versus before, they didn't exist. So just kind of to give you a rough idea, you don't need to be an expert on this, but just for you to be aware that this is where the chancellor's office is heading, it's not finalized yet, we're still currently under the current allocation and metrics and scoring, but they are moving us in this new direction. In fact, the categories where we're going from six to three, in the call letter or the instructions for this year for us to complete our five-year capital outlay plan, they are requiring us to scale down to just the three categories. So it's pretty clear that they're moving in this direction, and the funding will be this way. But the points and this new ranking system is not in place yet. Okay? The other big piece, I should have circled it with a red pen or something, is this piece over here where it's the required local contribution. When we have looked at our five-year capital outlay plans in the past, there's this portion of how much they're going to fund for the projects, and then how much we're going to contribute or match to the project as well. Now, depending on the type of project, the category, how many other schools have projects going into that same category, Eric Middlestead has helped us figure out where will we fall based on other projects in that category and how much our match is. Because the current funding process works in a way where the more we match, more points we get for that project. The more points we get, the higher chance we have of being in the top queue for getting the funding overall. So for some of the projects we've done recently, such as the request for the PE building that we finalized last year, that one, we scored very, very high even with almost zero local match. Our local match for that was a little over $200,000, basically zero. So we strategically decided, let's not put in a match because it's ranking really high. We'll get it without a match. So this is a really important change. What they're talking about is eliminating that piece of the criteria and requiring all projects to have a local match of at least 25%. If you do more than 25%, which you can, and some schools are accustomed to, you get more points and you'll have a higher score if you do 25 to say 50%. It'll stop at 50%, you won't get any more points for contributing any more than that. But this is a big change for us because some of our projects were more accustomed to doing a smaller or no match. There is a financial hardship that they're considering that if a district cannot put in that 25%, they would get a hardship, meaning they could still request the funds without putting in the match. However, to qualify for the hardship, you have to pass a bond in the last five years. We won't qualify for that because our bond failed.
Passed or just put one on?
You have to put one on and it has to fail. Sorry, I said that wrong. Yes, you have to put one, put one out there and have it fail.
As of when? Because we would still qualify until next November.
In the last five years, and our last one was 2014.
So fall of '19.
Yeah, but they haven't put this in place yet. It'll probably be put in place next year. So by then, we wouldn't qualify for hardship anymore in 2020. This will be seven years ago.
Basically wondering about our first project, whether it's far enough down that road, but go on.
Let me get to that one. The way I explain it, I think it'll answer your question. Okay, so again, this is where they're heading, it's not finalized yet, they're not doing it for the plan for this year, which would be for next year's funding projects, but the information we're receiving from the Department of Finance and the experience we've had with our PE building, which I'm going to describe right now, is giving us the sense that this is the direction they're going, and we need to pay attention to it with our requests for the future years. So, okay, let's talk about the plan itself and the PE building.
Just one question.
You bet.
The chart has the metrics for the growth and for modernization, but not for the life and safety category.
That's right, the life and safety projects don't receive points. And Eric, maybe you can remind me, because I'm not remembering off the top of my head, for the life and safety projects, how they'll rank those.
Yes, they're actually, they're either in or out. There's a very high criteria, and so they don't score, and currently, they don't require a local match. They're either considered a life safety project or not. And so the PE building, when we submitted it, it was, it made all of the criteria to be considered a health and safety project, from the chancellor's office criteria, which I think Lindsay will get into is important because the Department of Finance has a different thought of what a life safety project is.
Thank you.
But they are saying that in the future, life and safety projects would have that required 25% match even though they don't currently. Okay, so the PE replacement project, we had that approved and finalized last year with our FPP, our final project proposal, last year, approved by the board as a part of the five-year capital outlay plan. Throughout the chancellor's office budgeting process, it was in their queue, it went through the January budget as an approved state project from the chancellor's office to the Department of Finance. And in January, when it went to the Department of Finance, the Department of Finance started asking new and different questions than what our system is used to, and asked why we didn't have a local match, requested that we put in a local match within a very short matter, a few days time period, and we weren't able to respond to that request. And they asked if we had a seismic report, which we already had, so we said, yes, we have that. And at that point, the Department of Finance pulled our project off of the approved list for the budget for this upcoming year. We've been working with the chancellor's office to try to understand where we're at, how this is working. We are one of 27 colleges that had the same experience, but all for different reasons. They weren't all, the different projects that were pulled off of the list in January weren't all because the schools didn't have a local match, some of them it was, some of it wasn't, some it was Department of Finance didn't like the project in particular, or who knows what. We're not sure exactly why this has occurred with all 27 projects. So where this project is at right now, it's still in the queue, it's been rolled over into next year's spending plan unless it gets put back on the May revise, which there is a chance, I don't know how big or small of a chance, but there's a chance the governor comes in and legislature steps in and says, hey, those projects were all approved, there's 27 of them, they should all be put back in the budget. So knock on wood, that's what we're hoping for, is that it ends up back on the May revise. If it doesn't, then it will just be rolled over into next year, which is why I have it listed on here as a preview, worst case, this is what the board's going to be seeing in June, is it listed on here again. We won't have to do another FPP, that's already complete, but what I am proposing is that if that does happen, that we submit for a 10% local match for that project. Again, we're still under the current rules where a 25% local match is not required, so 10% would be below that required amount because it's not required yet, but at least putting in 10% will show the Department of Finance, our good faith effort, that we are committed to the project, we are committed to funding part of the project because they have this mentality right now that districts should have some teeth in the game, some commitment to it and not just be looking for everything to be covered when a district potentially has reserves, which they can see we do have reserves. So that's the PE project. Any questions about that one? I know it's odd and unusual, we seem to be experiencing a lot of odd and unusual things happening with our budget in the chancellor's office right now.
Well, if it shows up in the May revise, our contribution is the...
$200,000. Yes.
If I could add in as well, there's going to be a little bit of conflict in, because I hope it's in the May revise as well, but by then, we will have already put together the five-year construction plan to make your June board agenda. So you might get a five-year plan that shows the PE project with no match, or with a match if we decide to try to change it, but then it's in the 1920 governors list. So just be prepared for an odd year where it could show up or be inconsistent with what you know at the time because of the time it takes to process the paperwork and get it on a board agenda or in the final five-year plan.
My question is just with this interaction with the Department of Finance, is this something that other colleges in the system have seen happen before, or is this really super unusual? Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've heard that it's super unusual.
It is, before the last couple of years, it was very unusual, it never happened. It seemed to have occurred with Governor Brown. Governor Brown was not supportive of Prop 51 because it was a grassroots effort that came from the voters, they had an initiative, they gathered money, they got signatures, they put the bond on the ballot, and he was against it because of the debt service. Since it passed, it's happened every year, and that was under Governor Brown's regime, where a list of 25 projects would come out from the Board of Governors at the chancellor's office, and four projects would be on the governor's list, and then a lobbying effort would happen and maybe we ended up with 11. They were using this criteria, as I mentioned earlier, that was different than what we use, the chancellor's office, as life and safety, but they're basically have been saying, we only fund critical life safety projects. And again, it was a different criteria, so you may see a project on the list that said new fine arts building, and somehow that campus convinced the Department of Finance that that was a life and safety project. So for the last three years, we've seen this occurring where a list of 25 or so gets approved by the Board of Governors with Prop 51 money, and then the Department of Finance, acting under the auspice of the governor, pulls down that list, and then it grows just a little bit. I think one year it went from four to 11, and I think last year it went from like five to 15 through the lobbying effort. But those other projects that were not on the list, that originally got approval, they have to recompete. And so your PE project is recompeting right now in the 2021 governor's budget for the Board of Governors to approve in July. So it's, we hope it goes away with the theme of the new governor, who was supportive of Prop 51, but we really won't know until that May revise comes out.
And who is on behalf of the community colleges, who is lobbying the governor right now to make sure that it gets on the May revise?
So we have two efforts going on, and Lindsay can respond for Santa Barbara specifically, but I'm also a member of Board of Governors, Board of Directors, a member of the CCFC, the California Community College Facilities Coalition. We are acting on behalf of all 27 projects, not just one singularly. There's a, the League of California, the president's kind of group, they're lobbying, again, a group effort, and then every district that I know of, they have individual lobbyists that are also pushing. As I mentioned in the past, no one, everyone supported the bond, the list, with the exception of the governor. So it was approved by education subcommittees, finance subcommittees in previous years, and the governor just wouldn't budge. So we're hoping with all the lobbying going on, everything we're hearing right now is everybody is supporting it. I actually spoke with the CCFC executive director today, and they're meeting right now, and everybody seems to be supporting it. So we're really hopeful, because it also, to me, it sends a message, if they're on the May revise, then that's the governor telling the Department of Finance to stand down, they're going to approve everything the Board of Governors did as long as there's funding, and if they're not on the May revise, he may be continuing the same philosophy as Governor Brown.
Trustee Haslam.
I asked this question way back when, when we were first approving it, and it had to do with, I mean, there are two basic reasons for doing this. One has to do with health and safety, and the other has to do with simply modernizing the facility. And the question I had was, wouldn't it be less expensive if we're just concerned about health and safety to retrofit it and to build it in a safer way? And I asked also whether that was possible, and the answer was yes, and the cost was something in the vicinity of $10 to $12 million. Given that this is a change, I wonder if something else has changed and they've become more open to that possibility. You think that's, is that realistic?
I think everything is within the realm of possibility, but the process would be, if we're going to change the scope of the project, we would start over. So we would actually withdraw, let's just use the PE project, and if the board decides we don't want to do this life and safety project, we want to modernize the building, we would withdraw the proposal that they have, and then we would start over with an initial project proposal and the new scope of work that you mentioned, and then it would fall under a different set of criteria. The challenge we would have, in my opinion, with the same Department of Finance person there, it wouldn't meet his criteria of critical life safety. So in this situation, I've never seen one before this year that was deemed critical life safety by the chancellor's office and not by the Department of Finance. They, you know, I mean, it's pretty obvious when you have a seismic report and it has the level needed to qualify as a life safety, which is the highest bar for the chancellor's office, that the Department of Finance would not support it. So like every other project, you could always go with a modernization and not say it's a life safety. The challenge we have is this Department of Finance interpretation that all they fund are life safeties, and they're not even paying attention to our categories that Lindsay mentioned earlier, the modernization, the growth, it's all about life safety. So that's how they deemed this list and moved projects off the list, is because they feel that none of the projects met their definition of critical life safety.
Trustee, who?
Hey, Eric, so since we, since you mentioned that districts are employing lobbyists to help out on this, and we don't have a district lobbyist, do you then recommend that our board members meet with our assembly member and senator to talk about getting this prioritized, or is it too early for that, we should wait for the May revise?
So can I start with that first? We have begun working with an advocate for the first time, we've just started working with them because of this project. So we do have someone starting to work on it, yeah, yeah. However, we still would love your help, too.
Yes, I think the more, the more, the better. Everybody's kind of shocked and approaching it, and everybody's getting all the support they can. I personally have been in Sacramento, talking to senators in the area of my district, everybody is trying everything they can to get support for these projects.
Trustee Gronger.
So just to be sure I'm clear on this, we're saying Department of Finance rejected it or pulled it off the list for two reasons, one being they wanted more match, and two being didn't agree with the seismic report or didn't feel it was life safety for whatever reasons they have on that. So it's both of those.
No, not quite. Those were the two questions they asked, and we responded by saying, we've already done a seismic report, we've checked that box, the only criteria that I'm aware of is the match portion of it, but those are the two questions they asked.
So I thought Eric was describing them as not being convinced by the life safety aspect of it.
It's, he hasn't put anything in writing specifically of that. When he asked the seismic report, he said, you know, maybe it's a higher seismic risk level, but Lindsay's correct, he was going more on the match. When I was referring to the safety projects, it was more about in general with all the projects on the list, that if they're not on the list, it's not meeting his definition of life safety, which is different than the chancellor's office. So for me, it's difficult to see some of those on there, like a new fine arts building, where they've justified the old fine arts building as a critical life safety component, right? The chancellor's office typically wouldn't go for that criteria. So he's been kind of a moving target, but I know from having talked to your specialist in the chancellor's office, they feel that it was all about the local contribution on your PE project.
So there was no option for like an amendment, like, okay, well, great, you don't want to prove it as is, can we amend and see if we can, there was no process of that sort?
They gave us less than a week to provide a local match, and we felt that there was not enough time to meet with the board and figure out if that would be realistic to do. It was a very short amount of time. Yeah. Yeah. And we also didn't know what they were looking for. There was no direction on what kind of a local match, it was a bit kind of last minute and no clear direction, and no clear direction that it wouldn't go through without providing something.
That's correct, and what Lindsay said, there was another district that had another life safety project, it was San Mateo, and their facilities director had the authority, and he put up a 10% match, and the Department of Finance still rejected that one. He felt that San Mateo should have more money, he wanted 25%, and so he rejected that one as well. So it's kind of like he was making up his policy interpretation as he went along. So as we were entertaining your project, you know, the challenge was get information or direction from the board, and we didn't know what the number was, you know, 10%, 25% of $40 million is a lot of money, and it was in a very short amount of time. And as Lindsay said, we didn't know for sure he was going to actually, if it was an idle threat, or if he actually was going to keep it off the list. So we're still hoping that the current governor has his wits about him and supports them all and just puts them back on the way they were approved by the Board of Governors.
Thank you.
I feel like I didn't quite get a chance to answer Trustee Haslam's questions about repairing the building. Do you mind, do you want me to talk about that just a little bit more?
I'm not saying that that would be the critical variable for me, but it isn't one option that we should have before us to consider. And the dependent variable is if they have changed the rules to make that possible, because last time I asked the question, the answer was no, that, well, as he said, we'd have to go back in the queue and start all over again.
Yeah.
And that we would have to pick up the entirety of the tab.
Right, that's what I wanted to clarify, when we talk about just repairing a building, we're not going to receive funding for that type of work. So we would be picking up that whole bill, and even if we're talking about, let's say, doing a 10% match, that's $4 million, and there's far more than $4 million worth of repairs needed on that building. We have to remember that that building, currently based on the chancellor's office assessment of that building, it's at a 55% facility cost index, meaning that more than half of the cost to replace that building would be needed to repair it. So we're talking about over $20 million worth of repairs needed on that building to bring it to a state where it's up to code, where everything is safe. And then we also have the problem with that building, because it was built so long ago, it's just not equitable in terms of the male and female locker rooms, restrooms, all of that setup just doesn't flow well. Yeah, a lot of ADA issues, et cetera. So there's some things we just can't even change with that building without starting over.
I remember that part of the conversation. It just reaffirms my conviction that when the state says it's trying to save money, it really doesn't know how to go about it. Doesn't have to, doesn't, isn't even able to explore it, to say that, well, if we repair it, it's all yours, is a major disincentive to local communities and local agencies to do their, to do something that's less expensive. I also get the point, I really do, that the whole building, if that 20 million is really a valid number, then I buy it.
Any more conversations about the PE building? So I'm going to move on from that one if you are ready.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I don't know, it seems like, Peter, it seems like, you know, if we don't do this, we do the whole thing or we do nothing, which is what we, which what we had to accept the last time we discussed this. And even trying to save... And even trying to save the state money is not going to save the state, the, the state money, because the state's hell bent on spending it anyway, so if we don't take it, somebody else will. But some things are skewed here, because it's not the state's money, it's the taxpayer money, and it doesn't ring right with me, but it is what it is. So, but the, the other, and another point, I, I got here, related, very much related to this, we had, um, if, if we were lucky enough to get all the funding for this building and get it, we would still have, um, what, five, six million dollars in expenses for temporary facilities while the tear down and the new buildings being made. So if that, if we had to come up with this 4 million here, um, and pay for that, that's 10 million dollars right out of our reserves right there. And then the earlier number that Peter mentioned was like 12 million, we could at least do some seismic refitting or something, if not fix the whole building. Either way, we're going to be out, you know, over 10 million dollars, no matter, almost no matter what happens. And, you know, where we have no flexibility to do anything in between here, except hope that we still get the 100% funding, and, and we won't know that until May, as I understand it. So I guess we wait till May, and then we make a decision to move, to move forward or just cancel the project, you know, and, and pray for better days or do something different. Because to come up with, with some kind of a match and pay for the temporary facilities, and then there's other costs, like they didn't cover the landscaping and other things we need to do to create a good environment, we're going to be looking at a lot of money going out, and our reserves are shrinking in the economy projections, you know, in the next years, every, they, most of the experts forecast some kind of a recession, which will cause our enrollment to go up, which would be great, but when it does, we won't have the reserves to cover not, uh, we'll end up having to cut classes, because we won't have the reserves to deal with, which we'll need at that point. That's why, one of the reasons we have reserves. I, I don't like the whole situation, I just thought I'd throw those thoughts out.
Yeah, we get through the next couple of buildings, because that conversation, we should take it all as a whole, possibly. Okay, so did anyone else have a question about PE?
No, I was, we were saying, along the same lines, that I think there's a big picture we need to back up to in discussing this, but you want to go through the buildings first, that's fine.
Okay, great. Okay, so moving on, in the five-year capital plan, the next building is the Student Services renovation building. That building we had on the five-year capital plan last year for an IPP, an initial project plan, that's the first step in, in getting the funding. So this year, we're at the stage where that has been approved for us to now ask for the funding with an FPP, the final project proposal. So we're proposing that we have that on our plan, we do an FPP for it, and this, these costs here that are in green, they're very much estimates right now, because we haven't submitted it to the state for approval. But we have estimates right now of that project being about 18 million dollars. Remember, it's a, a renovation of the building, not a tear down of the building, but it's a complete renovation, renovation where we would gut the entire building, every little tiny bit of it, HVAC, electrical, all the walls, and then rebuild it. This has been a very important project for us, something that we're talking about regularly with the flow of student services and how to support our students receive, is not being managed well in that building with the way it is laid out. That building, historically, it was built in the library, I guess anybody didn't know that. So it's got this large, like, column kind of in the middle, taking up a lot of room. It's just not laid out properly for what we're using it for today, and it's been something we've been really struggling with for our students, feeling like they're not able to find what they need, and it's not a great layout. So this is a really important project for us that we're very supportive of and, and serious about doing. So with this particular project, we need to be talking about this local match concept again. Luckily, the project is not in the 40 million dollar range, you know, in the 18 million dollar range, it's a much smaller project, and a local contribution of 25% for that project is only four and a half million dollars. I'm interested in doing the 25% match, knowing that with the chancellor's office transitioning to that being a required match, I would hate to do a smaller match, just to save a half a million or a million dollars and have our project not go through for funding. So for that one, like I said, I'm recommending that we do the 25% match, which is at that four and a half million dollar range. That one would be funded a couple of years out, the '21, '22 spending year, which is the beginning, that's the planning and working drawing phase.
Four and a half, the chart, it says three. In your memo?
There's a range.
That's, that's the low range, I'm, I'm quoting.
You're recommending the four and a half.
Okay. Could be lower, that would be great.
Yes. And if I could just jump into, to echo what Lindsay's saying, that the range is more about where the final dollar amount comes out. We have not created a final project proposal for the student service. So it's pretty much been a paper, formula-driven budget, and we still have to go through the entire, um, final project proposal phase, which an architect would do site cost estimates, and then we have building formulas, and then it gets estimated, estimated to escalated for inflation, I'm sorry. So we're trying not to, to put a hard number on any of these for the board, because there's so many variables still in front of us. But I, I wanted to just make sure you're aware that the student service has not had the, the work done to a final project proposal like the PE building. That all would, if you give direction that this is okay, we would have to do that between now and when the June board agenda is due, and I will tell you, that's a sprint. It's a difficult task. It's, it's very, uh, very difficult to put that level of document together. So that's why I think Lindsay is asking for your support today. If there's not support, we may not do it at all, um, because of the, the amount of effort it takes.
Lindsay, I'm just wondering, and I think Eric said, well, you know, we don't like to put hard numbers in front, because it's so volatile, clearly, but just a clarification, from the May 24th board meeting from 2018, there was about a 4 million dollar difference from this. Is that still because of, or am I reading this?
On student services?
Yeah.
I see. Let's see.
This was last year?
Yeah, that, that was the, when Eric was here. I'm going to assume that's for escalation costs. Eric, am I guessing right?
There was, there was, we, I believe we did two scenarios back in May. We were looking at the student services building to demolish some portables and fit them in the existing building, because it was not efficient from the state's terms, meaning it had plenty of circulation space. And then between May and June, we actually eliminated that effort, because Lindsay had, did have a meeting with an architectural firm that didn't think they could add that much more space without expanding the building. And so because we're formula-driven, every time we reduce a square foot, we reduce the budget. So as I was preparing for today, I noticed that we had two IPP versions. One was what the numbers would hold, meaning get rid of those portables and fit that space in, but the second one was more realistic based on the advice of an architect, who I believe Lindsay had brought in, and they took a look at the building, not a, not an in-depth effort, but just took a look at the building and said, you know, we really can't add, I think it was another like 6,000 or 8,000 square feet in the existing building, like we thought on paper. So we went with the lower version, which would have then reduced that budget.
But you're not doing the lower version now? I mean, I'm confused. Is the, the, the numbers now are about 4 million higher than the numbers that we approved last year in the?
Was it, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I had it backwards. Was the numbers last year that you showed from the May meeting, was it about 10 million, or was it about 14 million?
About 14.
Yeah, so 14 million, there's, there's two numbers floating. So Lindsay was right, escalation for inflation. So when we submit projects, they're submitted at today's construction cost index, which is today's inflation rate. The second number we wanted to put in front of you, just to make sure we're aware, the chancellor's office, they, when they processed the project, they put a projection in for inflation, and it's based on 5% a year with the occupancy date in the proposal. So that usually equals about 27 to 30%, depending on the duration of the project. So that would be the difference between the 14, 2, which it would be submitted at, but when it gets processed, it would be at like 18, and both of those are ish numbers. So even going back to the gymnasium, more likely when it was submitted, it was submitted at a 30 million dollar project, and inflation took it up to 40.
Inflation for construction costs is extremely high right now, so each year you're talking about double-digit percentage increases for inflation.
And does it matter how much?
It will.
Percentage to the new.
Yeah.
Yeah, what, what they do, so, and I want to clarify this, because other boards have questioned it, each time you see a five-year plan, some of those numbers will move, sometimes down, because they do put in a 5% per year projection, and then every year that goes by, they true that up. So this year, for example, there were projects five, that were projected at 5% inflation, and inflation was only 3.51%. They actually went down one, one point something percent. And so every year, um, they'll go up or down a little bit, but it's the, the chancellor's office chewing up the budget before it gets on the governor's budget and gets locked in, they're chewing it up for inflation. So what I did, when we looked at these numbers, I took the number that we had, uh, if it was an FPP submitted it at, but then had a model to put it into to look at that 5% per year for inflation, that took us out to the completion of construction date for that particular project. So again, knowing there's still many variables, if all those variables were locked, then that would be the inflation difference, which equates to 5% per year from the original inflation date to the occupancy date of the project schedule.
So one more thing, just to clarify, on the student services building, this stage that we're at, where we would be asking for an FPP, that is the final stage. We would be at that point where we request the funds, then it would go through the process and be approved or ranked, and either we would get it or not, but it's kind of a no-going-backwards point for us, once we've requested it, that's the last step. Then the opposite side is our next building, the administration building renovation. This is a project that, as we were going through the facility master planning process, that's sort of the next one that jumps to the top of the list as needing major renovation. Again, for that one, we're talking about something similar to student services, where we would leave the building, you know, the kind of historic look of that building is very important to us, it would be a kind of more of an interior infrastructure renovation. We have similar problems with that building as student services in terms of flow, there's very odd, awkward offices that aren't laid out very well. Additionally, we have major infrastructure problems in that building with our plumbing, our electrical, et cetera, we're having continually, um, to fix, or do make emergency repairs to that building that are costing us quite a bit of money and, um, uh, creating inefficiencies with our, our work, what repairs need to be done, and things of that nature. So that building we have put on as the next one that we would begin the process for requesting funds. So the IPP step is the very first step, and if next year we change our mind and we say, hey, you know, we don't want to do an FPP for that one, we're not interested, we can do that. So it's just a first step to that process, that we have to, um, submit the IPP this year to get it in the queue for funding out in '22, '23. Now, this one, similar to the student services, I'm recommending that we, uh, submit the report with a 25% local match, so that we're ready for that, that transition to the new funding formula, if that's the, you know, the way that they head. And that one, as you can see, because it's a much more expensive project, that local match is quite substantial, you know, almost 10 million dollars for the local match on that one. And we are talking about something that's quite a few years out, and as we begin our discussion on the reserves and the local match for these first two projects, that project, I feel, it's, it's well beyond the reserves that we have. We would be looking to some kind of local bond to receive enough funds to do that project.
So the, that building, the last major renovation was 1989?
Probably, right?
Yeah. I feel like, I don't even want to watch. So then, the five-year construction plan from 2012 had, had it on there, and so were there some stuff done?
No, we didn't finish the process.
Okay, so at the time, we were proposing 27 million dollars.
And it's escalated now to around this range?
So everything's going that exponentially, like 3 million, 4 million is going to be 16 million, 16 million, unfortunately, yes. So maybe it's not good to have all these papers, because then you can just pretend like this.
That old paperwork, right?
If this keeps going up like this.
And you reminded me of one more thing I wanted to describe. So these additional projects listed in the five-year plan, you're seeing them in there, what we should be doing and will be doing is listing for the state that these are all the projects that are high priority for us, even though we're not asking for funding yet. We can only ask for funding for one project at a time, one per year, per site. So you can see from that one before, uh, we were asking for like one per year going out, and then it was a few years ago that we scaled back, and we said we need to do our facility master planning work, and we removed those, and now we're talking about, okay, we've done that work, let's get them back in the plan. But these additional projects, children's center, shot wake, and the physical science replacement are all not at the stage of asking for money yet, but listing them, and as time goes on, we'll be doing those.
So Lindsay, would it be fair to characterize the chart?
Five-year plan?
My submission?
Yeah.
That, it's really four different levels. You have, you have the bottom four that we're listing, so they get in queue essentially, and then you have the, a level for the administration building, where it's, you submit, I think you said an IPP.
IPP.
And the student services renovation is a higher.
FPP.
Closer, and then the physical education replacement is totally.
Completely unusual.
Yeah.
Yeah, I struggled between even listing it on here, because it really shouldn't even be on here, yeah.
So when you're, you're asking, you've made recommendations for all of this that essentially considers these four different stages.
Exactly.
If, if I could chime in there, I think that's a very good, um, evaluation of it. And notice how it's very stair-step looking. That's the way planning typically goes, where you have, maybe even ahead of that, one project under construction, one project being funded, one project in the FPP phase, one project in the IPP phase, and then, um, each project a year out sequentially. So in the perfect world, you've got almost like an assembly line, and if, I'm looking at the one sheet that Lindsay handed out, the, uh, single-page summary, five-year plan, that's green at the top, and you see that stair-step. So the only thing that's a commitment are those FPPs, right? And so the further out you get, the less you know about them. You don't know about the, the political dynamic, you don't know if there'll be a state bond, you don't know if you'll have a local bond, but it is showing the need. The, they are already on record as having, needing some level of renovation, so it really is just good planning. To be looking out that far, it also helps inform the board, if you are contemplating a local, uh, bond, that there is need for that local bond. So it's, it's, I, I had discussions with Lindsay last year and the year before about one or two projects on the list, because I go, I don't think that's representative of your true needs, but she's right, you didn't have a facilities master plan to help justify that. So now you have all that coming together, and it's just showing good planning that you can show the chancellor's office and others, and we do this statewide to help bolster those statewide bonds. As we're talking right now, there's a bill out there, Assembly Bill 408, that's talking about a statewide bond in 2020, and it's for that reason that there's need built up in the community college system, which is exactly what Lindsay's got on this list.
Trustee Gronger.
Um, so I, I really understand why the administration building is, is suffering and in need of plumbing, for example, um, renovation, but it sounds to me like what would happen here is it would come back to us next year for an FPP, and we would be asked to make a commitment for which we have no hope, as far as I could tell, of having that local match of 10 million dollars. We're not going to have a bond next year. So aren't we just stuck at that point?
So it wouldn't be a project that would be funded next year. It's not going to be until the '22, '23 time period that that project would start. That's just the planning and working drawing phases. And so with that, next year, we want to get it in the queue this year, so we have the option next year to make that decision and have those discussions. So in, in 2022, we could be talking about going out for a local bond, and then use a local bond for that portion of the match that we need.
What I'm saying is you're asking, you're going to ask for the commitment before we have a bond. I mean, the calendar has to work that way. And I don't understand whether we're, I mean.
Well, this year, it's not a firm commitment. The IPP is not a firm.
No, no, no. The FPP is. Next year, July 1, new five-year plan, would be an FPP, firm commitment, no money. I mean, there, there simply isn't even a bond date that would come up for next year, and 2020 isn't that.
But you just, you have to plan anyway. You have to make some assumptions. Suppose you don't, then you, you have the bond, and it passes.
We won't have the bond. No, no, I know, but I mean, we won't have the bond probably, I'm guessing, '24, but it could be that it's '22.
If, could I chime in, just, just to help make the board make an informed decision? What we also don't know for sure, and where Lindsay's going, I think is correct, it leaves you the flexibility to make that determination next year. These policies that Lindsay's talking about may not get approved by the Board of Governors, so la- So last year, when we were talking, we were talking about the student service project with no match. Strategically, we thought it would be a high score with the competition. So Lindsay's just trying to get ahead of it with preparing you to say, if the policy goes through, we would probably need a match. I'm still hoping the policy doesn't go through. And these projects could compete very well without a local match. But where she's going is just trying to give the board flexibility at this time next year. If next year, the policy went through, the board says, no way are we doing a bond till twenty twenty-four, then you would just say, we don't have a, a mechanism to do the match. We wouldn't submit the FPP, we wouldn't even start the FPP, we would just maybe resubmit it as an IPP. So it's just giving you more flexibility to keep it in the queue. Uh, because the dynamic in Sacramento is very, is changing every year.
So you can resubmit it as an IPP and keep it in the queue so we don't, if, if we learn we don't, we can't do it either because we don't have a bond or we don't have the reserve.
Yeah, we could resubmit it as an IPP with a lower match if that new criteria doesn't go through. We wouldn't need to put in a match because it may score really well without a match that high.
Okay. I, that's, I think, the piece of it that, that I was not getting. If you resubmit as an IPP with, and the match concept does not go forward, I, I still think numerically we have a problem affording the not covered expenses, the swing space and all of that. Where that comes from if, but again, if the match goes away entirely for all of these things.
It changes the whole dynamic.
It is a dynamic, that's really, I mean, this is a huge change, which has hu- huge financial difficulties for us, in my view. Um, and I think it's really frustrating because we're a college that's doing well with student success. We're a college that's, um, you know, doing well with the, the vision for success and for the new funding formula, and yet this is going to penalize us.
Yeah. It is very frustrating. In fact, I, I haven't shared yet that I, um, had the privilege of being appointed to the ACBO Facilities Task Force. Now I get to sit next to Eric instead of just have him call me and tell me what happens. Um, and I have been questioning and stating that I do not support this required twenty-five percent local match. So I've been saying it, one of the few voices in the room, that this is not affordable and this is not something that all colleges are going to be able to do. So it's in the notes, it's in the minutes, that this is going to be tough for us.
Thank you. Trusty Haslam?
Just an observation, it's remarkable to me that, that the projected cost here is within, what, three million dollars of, of a complete raising and reconstruction of the PE facility. At thirty, what, thirty-eight million, we're, we're essentially doing a renovation of the administration building. So I, I guess at, at some future point, I'd really like to see what, what on earth is costing us thirty-eight million dollars by way of plumbing?
It's, it's. Well, that's a, yeah, that, that would be a full renovation, just like student services, where we would have got the entire building. All that would be left is that saw.
And then it includes everything. That's some furniture fixtures and equipment as well.
Yeah. You know, I understand that, that reconstruction can be more expensive than new construction. And, and in, in this, it's materials, more so the labor that's increasing the cost for these things.
Because we went through a period, and Eric will remember this, where the cost of steel was so much and the cost of all the projects just went up astronomically. And then when that steel crisis was over, things went back down. So we just never know what's, what's going to happen.
I think that's a good point that Dr. Benjamin makes because some of those are unknown. And we've seen that experiencing right now with just the tariffs. There were projects in motion that had been bid and then the tariffs came in, you know, and adding twenty-five percent, it's just, those are millions of dollars on projects. I recall at one point in time when oil was going through the roof, it was cheaper to lay concrete than asphalt. And that's never been the case. You know, we were starting to build pro- um, parking lots with concrete because it was better. But that supply, demand and the market costs are certainly to be factored in.
So in the category we have on here called modernization, does that mean essentially a gutting down to a shell? Is that?
The category of modernization means that the project is not a life and safety project. The project does not, the building does not have a seismic need, so it doesn't fit into that category. It doesn't fit into the growth category because we're not building a brand-new building or adding to a building because our programs are growing by FTS. So modernization is everything else. You're renovating, you're replacing, you're, it could be a.
A whole range.
And it's antiquated systems as well that can have an impact on, uh, instruction. So you're modernizing to, so that you're up to date and students are in facilities that mirror what they'll, especially in occupational programs, that mirror what they're seeing in the marketplace once they get jobs.
And if I could add to that, the way the chancellor's works on those is they fund those at seventy-five percent of a new building's cost. So it's, it's, they give you enough money to actually get into the infrastructure of the building. So it is, it's more formula driven, but it's like, say, seventy-five percent of the cost. So it's well beyond tenant improvements. It's stripping the walls down to it's a bare, bare structure and putting in new air conditioning and electrical systems, um, to bring those up to speed. And as Dr. Benjamin mentions, for programmatic changes as well. So in the case of the student service building, the building is going to operate much better for the needs of students in addition to all those infrastructure improvements.
Trusty Wood? Yes. Maybe we're not done discussing yet, but the direction we're looking for is do you want to create an FPP for the student services? Are we okay with the formula for the physical education building?
Not knowing what's going to happen with the May revise.
Yeah.
You know, wanting to talk about it early, so we have time to digest and think about it.
I guess, no, my, I mean, hearing Craig and, you know, Peter talk about renovation, remodeling, all of that, and again, because of my wonderful Lindsay, I call it my Lindsay binder, tell my husband, nope, that's my Lindsay binder. We, the bond did, we used money from the last bond to do a lot of these face lifts to the PE building. And, um, and I just, I, there's such a large student success component to our PE department. And that facility is well-loved and, and the, just the wraparound services that our athletics department provides for students is just phenomenal. And we are also one of the colleges that offers a degree to transfer and you need to take the PE class to get an AA degree, and that's important for our CSU partner institutions, that student success. So since the inception of this conversation, this building really has been a student success building, in my view, and I think in all of our views. And, um, and it's a facility that it seems like, oh, athletics, um, athletics is a phenomenal component of our student life, and they produce the scholarly outcomes, students. And so we have, we have done these things, I think. And it's, oh, I'm talking, this was in two thousand and fourteen, and this must have been Julie who gave us all the different things we were spending money on these bonds. And, I mean, I don't know what the word is, but I would imagine this is done now. And whatever we did for that building, um, we spent. I, I don't think that just renovating it would give our students that type of, especially in the allied health and even the kinesiology, um, just with kids, what we were talking about, students mirroring in the, the workforce, that, um, that would be my desire to have that type of cutting edge facility in our community, you know, for students. And we have cottages and physical therapists, and so our community is very much about building up our workforce in that area because of both our young, but also our aging population that lives here.
So are we ready to kind of talk big picture?
Yeah, I was going to say, let's direct our attention towards this page three of the Word document that has a little summary here of the dollar amounts. And I'll just clarify a little bit of it briefly. The left column here is an estimated range I called the, the low end. You can see for the PE building, the low and the high is the same because that building, that, um, FPP and everything is already complete. That's not going to change at this point. And then I listed out the swing space here because we do want to be clear that the swing space is not included in this five-year capital outlay plan estimates. And I have a range for swing space. And then student services, we have a range for the match because that's not finalized yet. And then also a range for the swing space. So you can see the grand total here, the low end for those two buildings, the contribution and the swing space of the twelve point six million, and then on the high range, the seventeen point six million. And then we can talk about our fund balances, which we just reviewed recently when we did our five-year fiscal projections, um, you know, the Lindsay chart, we love to call. We can see and we're aware of the funds that we have in our construction fund that we set aside quite a while ago for the campus center. Those funds continue to remain there and we're projecting out that we'll have about ten million above our two million dollar board minimum in the construction fund. And what I'm proposing is that we use that ten million to cover the bulk of these, uh, costs that we've listed out here. And then that we can consider using our unrestricted general fund, uh, reserves to cover the additional amount. For our board policy, we did set that we have that reserve, um, for contingencies and for specific purposes that, that we feel are, are, um, you know, purposeful and, and relevant to the institution. And I think these expenses qualify for, uh, the use of our unrestricted reserves. But that's, you know, what we can start to talk about now.
So from my point of view, we've never really had a board discussion about the campus center set aside money and what it's for, other than when we originally set it aside for our match for campus center. And we've used some of it for the seismic upgrade to campus center in the interim, but we didn't talk about the, the whole amount. And so when I look at this as a planning, um, situation, I think we need to ask ourselves, what's that money for? I mean, it was for campus center, that was our highest priority for a very long time. And that's now somehow not on our list anymore, which is not something we've really talked about in my mind. We have other ways of looking at spending that money, um, which would include, I went through the chancellor's office assessment of our buildings, which they did, what, last fall fusion report?
Yeah.
And, um, I looked at not, not so much their total totals for everything. I, I did look at that, but I looked at what they were saying about all our buildings. And every one of those buildings, every one of our buildings except West Campus Classrooms, thank goodness, had serious infrastructure problems. Most often, it was either failing or beyond useful life for every building on electrical, plumbing, HVAC, roof, um, the really basic things that these buildings need. So when we take the money and put it into one building, we are not in effect doing other than kind of patching things in the other buildings. And, um, the number that the chancellor's office estimated for those basic things was ten point four million dollars. So in my mind, one way you could spend the ten million that we have is to address every single building in terms of its most fundamental characteristics, its infrastructure, the plumbing, the electrical, the air conditioning and, um, the roof, that kind of thing. That is just not, uh, either failing or actually failing or, uh, not up to, um, about to fail, basically. And that includes the sports pavilion, which that number for the sports pavilion was two point eight million. So if you address those, which was included the furnace, the sewer, the water and the roof issues.
So.
Well, I just, that just sounds to me as though you're piecemealing. It seems to me, Eric, you know more about this than I do, but it seems to me that what you need is a comprehensive plan where you incorporate your bond, you know, eventually it'll pass and come up with a total. If you do what you're saying, you're just doing just pieces of it and you're not doing anything in a holistic way. But if you do them right, one at a time, if you have a whole plan as to how you want to do that, how many bonds you want to pass, at what amount, and then you could have a plan that includes what you could get from the state and what you generate with the bond, and you do this year by year. And that way you're looking at it holistically, all the things you're talking about, each building, which ones do you want to only do what is required? And I don't know the extent to which what you find infusion is accurate in terms of the cost. Eric, if that's.
You're correct. It's, it's, um, it's a ballpark, it's based on an RS means database. But what, what I would throw out as a caution is when you see something in a building that says like the electrical system is, is damaged or failing, or usually it's outlived, it's useful life, and it says five hundred thousand dollars. It's, the, the way that the databases work, it's only talking about that system. It's not talking about the things you have to tear apart to get to that system. So remember when I was there last time and we had the discussion about the nineteen fifty-six Chevy and how much it would cost to continue to rebuild those? Those, those budgets are meant to be put together where you renovate an entire building at once. And so there's another, uh, damaged or failing component for maybe the drywall system or the, um, you know, the HVAC system is, is not just the unit on the roof, it's the ducting above the ceiling. And there's another deficiency for the ceiling itself. So you can't just go in and do the HVAC as a slice of that. It, it is looked at from a holistic standpoint. Now, some of those things you can do that, that sit by themselves, like a roof, right? And I actually compared a roof once and it was about ten percent off from the FCI infusion. But that was my marketplace compared to, um, what the, what the model was. So they are statistical models, they are, they're, there's certainly a benefit to them. They're not something you can specifically budget by with one component, especially when those components are against the wall, um, behind the wall, you know, or, or above a ceiling. So there's, there's some validity, and again, yours was, yours was fresh. It doesn't take into consideration your bidding climate. But I'm agreeing that, um, the holistic approach from a planning standpoint, which is why I think when you see the, the projects Lindsay put on the list, it would be addressing the whole building one at a year if you had the local match money. But you can see the, the bigger plan there, right? Where you are going to be for a period of time, patching those others until they get to their point in line where it's a whole building renovation, which is why this, to me, it's such a critical thing to have this continuous facilities master plan so they don't get in this condition to begin with. And that's difficult because they're so expensive. But to have a whole plan where you're, you're always going to be patching, um, some buildings while you're trying to holistically fix other buildings. And, and I'm sure Rob can tell you a lot about the patching piece. When I was there last, I think it was raining and there was trash cans in the hallway, right? We would fix everything we could if we had all the money, but it's, it's going to be well beyond ten million dollars. It's just, it's an ongoing effort that's a considerable piece of your operational budget.
Okay. But I think, I agree with Helen, we need the big picture plan. I agree with what you're talking about. That wasn't where I was going. Where I was going was we have ten million dollars roughly in this pot. You can spend it on campus center, you can not spend it on campus center. You could spend it on one of these buildings and not another one and do some of the desperate maintenance that we have. If we spend it all on the buildings, it just seems to me that we have some seriously desperate maintenance that we're not doing. Um, and that concerns me. So I'm suggesting that, you know, that conversation we really haven't had, or that kind of plan that you're talking about. And I would say that in the column here, it's the seventeen million dollar one we're really looking at, where the low end is unlikely unless for PE, it goes, the, the match goes away and then it goes to twelve million, um, for both student services and PE. And from the point of view of spending the general reserves, I do not agree that this was ever intended for this kind of purpose. Those reserves were intended for not starting into a new system here, which is going to continue if it goes forward. It was intended for the unexpected sort of thing, like a recession, which comes on you, and really focused on being able to continue to offer classes when the revenue is cut, being able to not lay off our faculty and staff when revenue is cut. That was the emergency reserve. And we took three years of extensive participatory governance to get to that number. And so I don't see it as construction money at all. We have a construction fund. That was for construction money. And so we're short as far as I look at this. And that's why it's so frustrating that they have basically changed the, the numbers in a very big way, uh, because they may look at it and think that we have reserves, but we spent a great deal of collective time coming to terms with what we needed to do to make sure the operations continued, the faculty and the staff were able to stay through a recession and students to get classes.
Will they look at our general fund reserve amount in making their determination? In other words, they see this pot of money sitting there that, that we, we have a higher limit than others have because long before I was here, they decided, the board decided, we wanted to have the.
Yeah, we're fifteenth in the state right now with having the highest percentage of reserves compared to our expenditures. Actually have a list if anyone's interested in looking at it. They can, you know, they can and will.
So I, I'm not sure where this goes. I'm sympathetic to what, uh, Marcia has said. On the other hand, I look at the, I, I look at the seventeen million. On the other hand, I look at the, I I look at the seventeen million and think, or the 12 million, I guess we don't have seventeen million in our pot at the moment, maybe we have the 12 million. But the 12 million, assuming that was approved, gets us, what, thirty, forty million? I know it's all taxpayer money, but it's thirty, forty million that we wouldn't get if we don't do these things.
That's right. And then we'll continue with aging facilities that are costing us millions of dollars each year to repair.
So we we can make all these repairs and then we don't have.
Well, wait a minute, you're forgetting the bond thing. I mean, you could say, we are going to do X amount of state bond money, Y amount of repairs, critical repairs, and we want to have a bond in X year.
Yeah, that's the holistic plan, but what we're asking you today is for approval of this so we can move forward and stay on the list.
And I know.
And it may or may not happen, but it at least keeps us in line, that's what we're asking for.
We're making awfully good arguments.
Yeah, if we don't, if we don't do it, do this today, then you're saying, forget the building.
We're losing flexibility.
Yeah.
And Dr. Rockston, I mean, this is going to affect accreditation, because this is a huge part of the work we're doing right now.
Well, certainly, really good facilities master planning and educational master planning and can bring them into the future for us. But I'll tell you, if we could go back five years and have these buildings already in the bag and on behind us, our student success rates would be far greater than we already have. And the guided pathways thinking that informs both the desire to renovate the student services building, also informs what the plan is for the PE buildings, really to think about. What it means not just to have open access, but to have full wraparound services and instructions. And right now, I'm doing that, where students actively are lost. If we pay the student services building, A could be me, I've lost it three times. I'm lucky, actually, I keep that. It is, it is a really significant issue, we don't have a fully holistic operational plan moving forward. Not operation, but facilities master planning moving forward. And I think this is really a key step.
Yeah, I don't want you to feel like I'm against putting these in. What I'm concerned about is that we can't afford both. And I frankly would put student services, because I I wouldn't even call it guided pathway services. I think it's central to that student success for virtually every student we have in terms of numbers. And so to me, if they want us to sell them and explain to them why it is this fits the new student centered funding formula and this vision for student success, it's perfect. It really is, but because it touches every student and hopefully supports that. But I'm concerned, this chart, this numbers, it's not going to be the low end. And i- if the match continues, and let's lobby for it to go away. And that I I don't feel comfortable taking away general reserves. I mean, our five-year projection is we're right at the line. We have a, what, couple million dollar deficit factor coming, which puts us 2 million below the one right away. So we are already into our reserves with that deficit factor, as far as I know, under current current thinking. So we're we're below our policy level to start with.
Parker?
So my question is, first with this capital outlets plan, I mean, I recognize that this is a document that's going to state to the state about certain specific buildings. Does it restrict us from fine tuning the way we actually spend our facilities money? In the sense that if we decided that it was more important that, you know, we did a roof here and a roof there, would, can we do that, understanding that we might need to shift the project from this list? Or put it back in IPP instead of FPP?
Once we get to the FPP stage, we can't change it. The IPP stage, we can change things around, we cannot go forward with the FPP. We can do a new IPP that changes it, different local, different match amount, et cetera. But once we've gone to the FPP stage, we're locked in.
So for the student services building, we'd be locked in?
We'll be locked in now if we move forward with this.
So that's really what we're talking about, whether or not the student services building is a priority?
We're talking both, aren't we?
The other one is in IPP, right?
Administration. So we're re.
And we could be talking about the PE building. Okay, and then the.
Let me clarify the PE building on that note. The PE building has already been rolled over into next year. So it's already approved and rolled over, so we're not actually putting it back on the list. We don't have to put it back on the list at all, we could leave it off the list, it automatically rolls over with no local match. Putting it back on the list would be signifying that we want to do a 10% local match, that we want to do a change. And I've worked with our specialist at the facilities office, at the chancellor's office, that this is something we're talking about, and he would do the updated paperwork to show that we're doing a 10% a local match in a real short time period in that June time period. Because it's already rolled over into next year, regardless of if we listed anywhere here.
And then just, this is a a new board member question, looking at the five-year fiscal projections. And we're looking at the amount above that's in green as a construction fund. That, so that construction fund surplus, that is something that the board has said goes into.
That was from a while back, we had a year where we had real strong one-time revenues that we weren't expecting. And right at the same time, we had received an approved plan for the campus center, the same thing we're talking about, and it had a local match. So we decided to take that one-time revenue and stick it in the construction fund to be used for the match for the campus center project. And then the history with that is, when we went to actually go out to bid for the campus center project, the bids came in significantly higher, so the board rejected the bids. And that funding is now gone, and but we still have our local match that we had set aside.
So Marcia, what you're saying is that the board has never really discussed what happens to that.
Is that no longer campus center money? And now it's some other building money under this system and, you know, what's the plan?
Yeah, just to.
And just to confirm one more time, when you put in these costs for the local batch for student services, that's assuming this 25% policy happens.
Goes through, if it doesn't, we could lower those back down.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if it, if the new plan doesn't go through at all, meaning we still have the six categories and the old, the current, I should say, ranking criteria, then we we kind of know where we're at. We can use Eric's expertise and do all that calculation and go, oh, look, we can put in a really small match or, you know, medium match and see how we rank. Right now, we're just in this time period where we're in transition and we don't know if they're going in that direction or not. So I'm just kind of bracing for heading in that direction and being prepared for that. If not, it's good news for us, because our projects tend to rank pretty well, depending on the category they're in. Like student services, for example, did really well for us, because there were no other student services projects at all. We were the only one, so.
So I'm, trust you, Neil.
Oh, yeah. I just had a quick follow-up question. But since the student services in FPE, we send them, we're locked into it. We're not locked into paying the money, since that that policy is, you know, should we not be grandfathered in for having submitted the FPP now or?
So on student services, if we submit the FPP with a local 25% match, we would be locked in for that local 25% match, yes, we would.
That's locking this in, okay, so we are making the commitment whether they pass that policy.
That's correct, yeah. Kind of with a fear that even though we're not under the new policy with our PE building, they kicked it out because of this concept of them wanting to move to it. So, yeah, we're we're just trying to guess best of what's going to happen, yeah. I'm reluctant to put in less of a match for that, knowing they might just kick it out. And like I said, luckily, 25% is 4 million, it's not 10 million, so, yeah.
All interesting, Neilson, but after that, what I'd like to ask you to do, Lindsay, is if you could summarize the recommendations you have that you would like us to approve today.
Seems to me, it's very apparent now, and I figured it'd come up sooner or later. We had, Lindsay's done a wonderful job of ranking the buildings and the physical needs and everything. But how that how that affected is what the state's just starting to look at, is how that affects our student throughput. And what Marcia said about the student services building. We've never talked about, you know, how that's ranked our buildings on how on how it affects our student throughputs. And so, but without further discussion, unless we have more, and I hope we will, and I think we should, because that should be an element of our planning, as well as just, and, you know, and also budgeting enough money to keep up with the with the average maintenance, instead of let things fall and then have to play three and four-year catch-up to get things working properly again. We need to have a really good plan of what to do with the numbers in green on this bar chart here. What would that's, we have that 12 million dollars sitting there, but it was put there for a reason, and now we're not, now we're sitting here questioning, what reason is it really there for? And, you know, I I think we need to have that discussion about what goes into that master plan and the construction needs. And that needs to happen at the time when we when we prioritize prioritize things so we can figure out what we need for bond money and when we need it and how we're going to make this happen. That's one aspect that that a couple presidents ago, I think President Gaskin was really was looking at, how does the whole whole campus work and how do things go together? And had some kind of an outline for a good plan. And then when we didn't get, when the bond measure didn't go through, it sort of all went away and got transferred over to the student, to this building here, which we didn't do, we fixed it instead. And then, you know, the PE building was always there, but it's not as old as some of the other buildings. In fact, the student services building is much older than the PE building, because I was a student, you know, when I was a brand-new library. That's how old I am, I'm ancient. So maybe not as old as Peter, but I've worked on it.
Careful.
Careful. But I really think we need to schedule some some time and do some work on how on the, on discussing the aspects of that plan. And but I am for, and if it comes to a vote today, if we need to do something to keep hold our our place in line, I would vote to do so. The worst case is, we can do what we did with the with this building here. If we get stuck with, okay, here's the state money, now you got to pay your share. If we can't pay it, then we just go no, and we don't pay it. So I mean, we're not, we're not spending the money, we're just committing ourselves if everything else goes right. I'm done, that's okay.
So Lindsay.
Okay.
Back to my question.
Yes, so what we're recommending right now is that the Board of Trustees basically view this as a as a draft five-year capital outlay plan. And that we approve the potential for moving forward with putting in for a 10% local match on the PE building if the May revise does not add it back on, because we'll need to do that very quickly. And that we include in our five-year plan for this upcoming year an FPP on the student services building with a 25% match, which locks us in. And that we include an IPP for admin with a 25% match, that one we will not be locked in, but it will get us in the queue for funding for that that building. And then that we include these other buildings just for reference with the state, but we wouldn't be asking for funding for those.
I hear a motion in that regard. Trustee, a boot.
It's just. It's just reports and information, so you just want, you just want consensus to direct Dr. Benjamin to move forward in this direction? Because it's not.
We could take action, but maybe it's just.
It's just more, you just want consensus that we're giving the government a direction to.
Not a parliamentarian, so I don't know.
You need a decision from us today.
I do, because what we need to do going forward between now and June, like Eric mentioned, is quite a sprint to get some work done on student services, so we can get the IPP completed. Because we need to do an architectural forums and work and a seismic evaluation and complete the FPP documentation, which is quite a lengthy process. So I didn't want to move forward with that unless we were all prepared to do that.
It's notice for discussion.
I mean, I'm, I'm, based on the discussion that we just had and the reports and information, I'm I'm good and happy with giving Dr. Benjamin direction to move forward and whatever the team needs to get us on the right track here.
It looks like you just need consensus, it's not only a front vote. Put it on on the 11th for a vote, since they've had the discussion today.
Do you actually need a vote, as long as you know that?
It will, I mean. It will defer to Dr. Benjamin.
You're giving us direction to move forward?
As I said, as Lindsay has described, this is so much work. I think we should vote earlier rather than later, it's not like he does all this and then we deny it. So I agree.
So consensus today, and then more, a little more discussion on.
I do want to clarify.
I'm sorry, so so you're saying what, Jonathan?
I'm saying, I I understand why we, why the inclination is like, let's vote today, because we don't want to waste the time.
Right.
This is so much work to get done, so I'm saying on the 11th, please, on the vote.
On the 11th?
On the draft, at least, like, say, yeah. Because I want them to at least have that on record, yes, we're okay with it.
Can we vote on the 11th and?
We can add it to the agenda for a vote on the.
And I just, I wanted to just, I know it's just overhearing the discussion with what's a part, you're not. From what I remember, Eric and Lindsay, it's not that you guys told us that student union is like number one, because you felt that it was not number one, that student services should have been number one. It was because of the criteria with, by which you guys were looking at this project, that you said, pretty sure we can get money for PE, so then let's go after that, right? Was that correct? So it's not that you guys are telling us that student services or the admin building is, none of these are more or less important, it was just the criteria you guys were using based on this.
The PE is health and safety, isn't it? That's what makes it a priority.
Right, because they added up all those metrics, that's what they recommended.
It's also been in the five-year plan for multiple years before I started. So there was an IPP before I started, so we were at the stage of doing an FPP. So we were already in that queue, and we didn't want to get out of that queue and lose that project. So it's it's all of those things that you're describing, plus that piece where it was in there before.
Because I understand Eric is helping us to just figure out which was going to get the funding, let's go there and, and yeah, really do all that late work.
That one is, as Dr. Benjamin pointed out, is a life and safety project. Student services came to the top of the list because of the possibility for us to get the funding, because there were no other projects. So, yeah, you're right, those couple came up to the top for various reasons. The others, I would feel, are more in line with the work we've been doing with facility master planning and are sort of in in order of which ones you think are most important.
Just a quick question for you and for Eric, I guess, and that is that, you know, it makes me nervous to have the PE building listed on this, just because I I'm sure it's different departments looking at things, but, you know, if it could automatically roll over and not be in this plan that we're giving a 10% match, is it is it a risk for us to have it on this?
So, right, we're going to have to do it right at that last-minute stage, this is due in June. So when the May revise comes, if it's included in the May revise, we won't, we won't list it on here. It'll just be if it doesn't end up on the May revise. Then our options are, put it in with the 10% match or just let it roll, which it already has rolled, with zero match. And I'm just worried, are we just going to end up right back where we're at again today? Where it's not pushed through the Department of Finance again, committing something in the game for us, yeah.
And if I could add into that, just for clarity, it may not look right in the plan that you review, because again, of those due dates, the May revise comes out like May 25th. We're going to have a printed plan for the board agenda on May 14th, I believe I ship it. So chances are, if you give direction, it it's going to be in the plan regardless, it's locked in. It's probably going to be in the plan with no match, even if you gave the direction for a match. It would be the chancellor's office processing that match. So just be prepared that you may get a document that says zero, and you may have approved a 10% match, or vice versa. But we've got to take some action just because of the timing of the May revise compared to the five-year plan.
Yes, our specialist at the chancellor's office is going to, he's already been advocating for us heavily on this project, and he is going to file that additional paperwork. So this is going to be a completely unusual dynamic if we commit to doing that 10% local match, if it doesn't end up on the May revise.
Well, I'm, you know, we're doing a consensus, we're doing a consensus thing. So I just wanted to say, I'm I'm not comfortable with a 10% match for PE. The rest I can go with, but what we are looking at here is money we don't have, as far as I'm concerned. We are either going with a couple million dollar deficit factor, we are either digging 5 million dollars into our general reserves, or that's without the the 10% for PE. We eliminate the 10% for PE, we're still using 5 million dollars out of our general reserves. With the 10% for PE, we're losing 9 million dollars of our general reserves. I'm not comfortable with that. And, you know, I just don't think that's the purpose of those reserves. And I don't think, we we haven't even gotten to the recession yet, and we're digging into those reserves. And it's going to come.
Lindsay, you agree with those numbers, and is that what it means?
Well, if we get into a recession, our FTS are going to go up, so that's going to actually. Well, if we get into a recession, our FTS are going to go up, so that's going to actually help us, not hurt us.
We used in the past those reserves to make sure that our employees did not delay.
But if there's, just leaving aside the FTEC.
FTEC, yes.
Yeah, the dollar amounts. Um, well, we have, we have the $10 million in the construction fund and Marcia brought that up earlier. What is what is it that we want to be using that for? So we do have that 10 million and I recognize it's above the 10 million that we would need to spend on both of these projects.
It's a discussion, each person's entitled to use her opinion, they're going to vote on Thursday. We'll come back maybe with some additional information for you, a little more research on the 11th.
Yeah, may I, just an observation here, I agree with absolutely everything everybody has said. Uh, there are legitimate causes for concern. There are legitimate causes for, let's get in line, let's not uh eliminate the possibility of generating state resources that could be applied to the building and others. So what's the answer? The the unavoidable reality is that we have been making jointly a very convincing argument to move forward with a bond measure. I think we we need to start thinking about that in a serious way very quickly. Because it's an absence of resources that we're really talking about.
You say, are you talking about 2020 when you say that?
Well, no, well, I think I am. I I I I uh I don't see the need for resources to um to be delayable. I mean, I, if if we're talking about these these kinds of deadlines, we should be thinking about feasibility in 2020. And if we can make a compelling argument to the public of for spending monies that are generative of of income from of revenues from the state that will help our our college maintain its status, I think we need to move forward with that.
You you have to know you're not going to get it out from the state. The discussion needs to be around what are the sources of revenue for construction on your campus?
Yeah.
And so the state is one, bond is another, and you have reserves and reserves of one-time money. What is the potential for those reserves increasing? What does that look like down the road? How much gets added to those annually? And you make a plan around the the resources. That is what you have to do. And I know you have all these issues around the bond, but that's your primary source of revenue for construction projects all over the state. And if you just look around, you guys are a little late, I think. Um, but all these other districts just have been passing bonds. He, I mean, huge, amazingly huge ones in in some districts. I think Shaboll, I saw Seas Pass one last year, maybe 900 million or something like that, just incredible. And you have to have the right arguments and convince people because they're, the colleges are important parts of the community, so.
And I and I think this community is ready. I know you're saying, you're shaking.
Well, you have to do polling, there's a lot involved in that, but you have to plan for it.
I I just said, I think, and you know, I don't know.
But the polling will let you know what, once you make up your mind.
Marcia is usually a 100% half-right.
Yeah.
Could could I add in, because I think this is a very healthy discussion. Um, I consult with a lot of districts and many of them are doing, having the discussions you're having right now about a bond, no bond, and the answer is exactly what Dr. Benjamin said, you start with polling. And so they're polling right now for a 2020 bond and the the results of that polling that would say, no, we're not going to go in 2020, or yep, we're going to go in 2020. So you can't make an informed decision without that polling. So I would only recommend that if you are considering it to to be able to make the decision yes or no, you start with polling and you would start with polling now.
Yes.
Amen.
Okay. Any other discussion?
On favor?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I just want to make sure, though, so we will have this on the agenda for a vote on the 11th, okay?
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
To second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?